And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this February 18, 2019. I now call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of minutes. Item one is their motion approve the regular meeting of February 4.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Motion carries. Any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up is special order of business. Item two is a hearing on a proposed resolution adopting and levying the final schedule of assessments for the 2018 sidewalk assessment project. At this time, I will open it up for public comments on this particular item. Hearing and seeing none and declare the hearing closed. Item three is a resolution adopting the final schedule of assessments for the sidewalk project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to reiterate my concern for the next sidewalk assessment project that as the contractor lists out traffic control for the properties, that rather than doing just a flat rate, we actually have the contractor assign the traffic control used at each property. This last one, it was 88-60 for each property regardless of how much or how little was used. So I'd just like it to be, since we're charging residents for it, have it equitably distributed.
Amendment? Or just a comment?
Just a comment.
Okay. Any further comments from council? Mr. Blanford?
I'm just curious, Director Cheese, can you clarify when we say traffic control, is that the sidewalk closed signs that are going?
Yes. What's happening when a sidewalk panel is removed, or maybe two in a row, or three in a row, or here and there type of thing, is that you're putting up wood stakes, lath, and then there's a, basically an orange caution tape that's put around that area because it's just a brief time where it's open and then it gets poured and concrete put back in. So it's a pretty simple approach, but it does have to happen with every situation where that occurs.
Anything further from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 20 budget for the city of Cedar Falls. Is there a motion approve and receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before these oral comments, I'd like to have Jen Rodenbeck just give us another brief update on the city budget.
Sure. Well, tonight is the public hearing, and as you and the council are aware, the budget process sometimes can be a long process, and we actually started last fall. Some of the process was, is the council did have two goal-setting sessions in November where outlined some priorities and parameters for the budget that staff could work with. The council then also held a committee meeting and a public hearing on the capital improvements program in January, which is a big piece of the budget. And then two weeks ago, at the February 4 Committee of the Whole, there was a presentation about the budget and set the hearing for tonight. So just real quickly, the hearing for tonight sets the tax rate at $10.95. So when you take that and factor it in with the rollback factors, residential properties will actually see a .13% decrease. Commercial properties will see a 2.41% decrease, and multi-residential will see a 7% decrease.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah.
We will now open it up for a public comment. Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item five is a resolution approving and adopting the FY '20 budget for the city of Cedar Falls. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Mr. Blanford?
Director Rodenbeck, just a couple of quick questions. One item that you and I actually discussed earlier this week about the assessed valuation increase that we have listed at 101 million, I had a question about whether or not that included any type of inflationary adjustment or reevaluation. Can you just clarify what we talked about?
Sure. There was no revaluation this year, so really that really illustrates growth because it's on the assessed value of 100%. So that would pretty much all be then for growth.
Thank you. And then my other question, I know we had a discussion during your first presentation about some additional funding for Met's Route 9.
Sure.
Can you just go through that real briefly?
Sure. So when Met Transit made the request this year, they did ask for a 2.5% increase, just a general increase over their whole operating budget. So in the budget for this year is, we did put that in there, their increase, but in addition, they asked for an additional, I think roughly $32,000 to be budgeted for Route 9. And what it does now is Route 9 doesn't run all day, so I think there's three hours kind of midday that it does not run. That Met is seeing that because of our growth in southern Cedar Falls, they just think there's more interest and there could be more ridership for that route. So we did put that in the budget, but we did talk to Met about, we'd like to still talk about that. In other words, how would that work? You know, is there looking at all their routes? I think just a good discussion about that.
I think, I'm glad we're doing that. I know we've talked about it for a number of years since the route was originally cut, so I'm glad we're able to finally refill that funding and get that service back. So, thank you.
Any further questions?
I'd just like to compliment Jen and her staff on the hundreds of hours of work that you put in on this, and always is out looking good, so thanks for all your work.
Just have some really good staff people that help with the project.
Anything further? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item six is a public hearing on a proposal to undertake a public improvement project for the Walnut Street Box Culvert Replacement University Branch of Dry Run Creek Project and authorize acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on my part, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This too. I will now open up for oral comments from the public. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing closed. Item seven is approving a public improvement for the Walnut Street Box Culvert Replacement University Branch of Dry Run Creek Project and authorizing acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Mr. Blanford?
Director Rodenbeck, just a couple of quick questions. One item that you and I actually discussed earlier this week about the assessed valuation increase that we have listed at 101 million, I had a question about whether or not that included any type of inflationary adjustment or reevaluation. Can you just clarify what we talked about?
Sure. There was no revaluation this year, so really that really illustrates growth because it's on the assessed value of 100%. So that would pretty much all be then for growth.
Thank you. And then my other question, I know we had a discussion during your first presentation about some additional funding for Met's Route 9.
Sure.
Can you just go through that real briefly?
Sure. So when Met Transit made the request this year, they did ask for a 2.5% increase, just a general increase over their whole operating budget. So in the budget for this year is, we did put that in there, their increase, but in addition, they asked for an additional, I think roughly $32,000 to be budgeted for Route 9. And what it does now is Route 9 doesn't run all day, so I think there's three hours kind of midday that it does not run. That Met is seeing that because of our growth in southern Cedar Falls, they just think there's more interest and there could be more ridership for that route. So we did put that in the budget, but we did talk to Met about, we'd like to still talk about that. In other words, how would that work? You know, is there looking at all their routes? I think just a good discussion about that.
I think, I'm glad we're doing that. I know we've talked about it for a number of years since the route was originally cut, so I'm glad we're able to finally refill that funding and get that service back. So, thank you.
Any further questions?
I'd just like to compliment Jen and her staff on the hundreds of hours of work that you put in on this, and always is out looking good, so thanks for all your work.
Just have some really good staff people that help with the project.
Anything further? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item six is a public hearing on a proposal to undertake a public improvement project for the Walnut Street Box Culvert Replacement University Branch of Dry Run Creek Project and authorize acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on my part, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This too. I will now open up for oral comments from the public. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing closed. Item seven is approving a public improvement for the Walnut Street Box Culvert Replacement University Branch of Dry Run Creek Project and authorizing acquisition of private property for said project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
I'd just like a brief description of what's going on. Very brief.
Walnut Street has a box culvert that has been in our program for quite some time that needs replaced. Due to the size of the structure and to be sized adequately, it needs property acquisition from the adjacent properties, whether it's temporary or permanent easement.
Anything further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight is a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 29 of zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District. Is there a motion receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
Received one written communication after the packet, and that is, was before council, and then just right before the meeting, received another one. So we've received two, and council should have them before.
Thank you. Before, once again, oral comments, I'll have Karen Howard give a background on this particular hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just going over this project, once again, we're here talking about parking and specifically the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District. The goal of this project primarily was to look at deleting some of the ambiguous language that's in the zoning ordinance right now, and then to establish clear and objective standards in the code to facilitate consistent review and approval of development projects that are coming forward. We looked at this because of some projects and because of confusion about the code and frustration on the part of developers, the community, and staff and the commission. And what we did was we looked at furthering those existing goals for the College Hill Business District. And one is to improve pedestrian access, to spur local development of more mixed-use storefronts with apartment dwellings above, and to link the upper hill and the lower hill along College Street into a more cohesive walkable area. This is straight out of the comprehensive plan. So just to highlight where these new standards would apply, they would apply in the commercial, to commercial and mixed-use buildings in the C3 district. On this map, you can see that that's the little business district for the College Hill Neighborhood that's right along College Street. It's outlined in black on the screen. And then it would also apply, some of these standards would apply to multiple dwelling buildings that are allowed in the R3 and the R4 zoning districts. Those are the higher-density multifamily districts that allows multiple dwellings, but discourages, it's been discouraged in the C3 district. So once again, going back to the primary purpose of this was to delete some ambiguous and confusing language in the code that's related to mixed-use buildings. Now, I'm not going to go through all this language that's on the screen, but it's just to illustrate the confusing language that's in the code right now that's created a lot of issues at the commission. Right now, it states in the code that residential uses may be contained within a commercial use, they're to be considered secondary or accessory uses and allowed in a commercial property. So it's really confusing what we mean by that. And it says, "Secondary or accessory residential uses to be established on the upper floors of principal permitted commercial uses are allowed, but no parking is required." So there's been interpretations from staff that that means that no parking is required in a mixed-use building where you've got a commercial building that's constructed to commercial standards with ground-floor commercial and upper-floor apartments that no parking is required. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about that. Does that, is that really what this language means? And what we did is we looked back through to try to find the legislative history of those standards that are in the College Hill overlay. So the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District was originally adopted in 1993, and the section that relates to the C3 commercial district, including the distinct parking requirements that apply to this area, that was added to the code in December of 2005. In an early draft, looking back at the minutes for that legislative process of the proposed legislation, there was language requiring parking for upper-floor residential uses in a mixed-use building, but at a lower ratio than what's required for multifamily buildings, and lower than what's required in the rest of the city. However, at some point during that legislative process, I believe before it came to council, or maybe it was at a council committee meeting, the language was modified to eliminate the requirement for parking for upper-floor residential in a mixed-use building. And this is the version that was adopted and is currently the law that applies for that area. However, since that time, there's been a lot of development proposals, and I think when that language was adopted, maybe people did not anticipate that there'd be the level of development interest in the size of the buildings that were being proposed. So I think there's been a lot of concern about larger projects, and is this really considered the residential above? Should the parking really be required at zero? And so those are the questions being considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So first of all, to try to delete that ambiguous language and get that out of the code when it's referring to accessory and secondary use. And then secondly, to define what we mean by a mixed-use building, which is a building designed for occupancy by minimum of two different principal uses. Generally, that would be commercial or active uses on the ground floor with residential or office uses above. That's a typical mixed-use building. And note that in, that commercial and mixed-use buildings are only allowed in the C3 district on the hill. So mixed-use buildings wouldn't be allowed in those other residential districts. And then once we have that established and we take away that ambiguous language, then we need to decide what the parking requirement is going to be for the different types of uses. So there is a section in the College Hill Overlay Zoning District that has, that lists parking requirements. So in that section, to establish parking standards for dwelling units within new mixed-use buildings at a ratio of one parking space per bedroom, but not less than one parking space per unit. And what we mean by that is that, say for example, a studio apartment, since there's not an official bedroom, that would then mean that it has to have at least one parking space. With this kind of parking ratio, all the units in a building are treated the same. It creates a simple calculation for the building as a whole, rather than trying to decide each individual apartment unit itself. And while most communities that we surveyed had lower parking requirements for apartment units in their most urban districts, staff does recommend a conservative approach until the College Hill Parking Study is completed, and then adjustments can be made accordingly. It also eliminates the requirement for visitor parking. Public parking is a resource that can be more efficiently shared in public lots in response to the fluctuating daily demand for parking. And private off-street parking is generally not publicly shared and not easily publicly shared. So the idea is to eliminate that visitor parking requirement. So for consistently in the R3 and R4 areas, and for multifamily buildings in those areas, establish the same parking standard for those buildings, note that that will slightly reduce the parking requirement for existing, as well as new, multiple dwelling buildings by lowering the requirement for studio and one-bedroom units. And I just want to repeat that because I think there's been some confusion about that. So that would, that applies to any new or any existing building, the new parking requirement once they are adopted. For existing or new upper-floor apartments within existing commercial or mixed-use buildings, no parking is required. Now, this is something that was brought up by the College Hill, some folks in the College Hill Business District, people that have existing buildings that have a few apartments above storefronts. Most of the buildings on the hill are two stories tall. There's a couple that are a little bit taller. But what this standard would be was that would grandfather in basically all the existing apartments so that no new parking would have to be required for those buildings. And as you know, a lot of the lots on the College Hill area are very small and narrow, so it would be very difficult to provide onsite parking for every single commercial lot on the hill. And then finally, with a new definition in the code for mixed-use buildings, there are design standards in the College Hill Overlay for multiple family buildings. This would also establish similar building design standards for mixed-use buildings so when those buildings come in for review, we have a review standard for those buildings to address safe and prominent building entries, quality storefront design, standards for high-quality building materials, building articulation, similar things that we already do for the multiple family buildings. And then there's some minor cleanup on some of the terms that we're using in the code to make it consistent with our definition section in the zoning ordinance. Just to summarize then, a lot of the discussion at P&amp;Z centered around balancing the goals for the College Hill Neighborhood. The importance of setting the parking requirements at the right level for this urban district where land costs are higher and there's a desire to use land efficiently to create that walkable neighborhood, promoting redevelopment that is consistent with the existing Main Street character of the College Hill Business District versus the more auto-centric commercial districts in outlying areas, balancing the benefits of more compact mixed-use development against concerns about spillover parking into the neighborhood, recognizing that providing parking beyond what is necessary translates into higher residential rents and higher lease rates for businesses, so being cautious about what standard we impose, and to reserve the prime land budding the U&amp;I campus for businesses and housing. Perhaps one of the questions for the parking study would be, are there remote parking solutions that could reasonably meet the parking demand of those students who use their cars primarily on weekends? So thinking a little bit broadly about the future as well, and not trying to have all the parking onsite for every single project on these small lots. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Community Development Department recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
You bet. Thanks for that description, Karen. This will now move to the oral comments. Folks here want to speak on behalf of this particular public hearing. You're welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and address, and a five-minute limit will apply like we always do in terms of public comment. Is there anybody?
Hello, I'm Jerry Geisler, 4412 South Hudson Road, Cedar Falls. Most of you know me. I've been here, I've been around probably longer than all of you except for Frank. I think I was here when Frank started on all this. But anyway, historically, the hill has had a parking problem up there, and Councilman Morris, Ryder, Dara, Runcie, Elaine Fallscraft, all of them have had to deal with this thing up there. And so we pretty much got this thing worked out now to where it's worked for the last 10 years. Now, 25 or 30 years ago, it was a mess up there, but we've spent a lot of money up there and got the thing probably pretty much under control. Just my family spent over a million dollars, a million dollars, on getting the parking problem straightened out up there. Now, due to time limitations, I won't go into every details on every item that I pointed out here, but there's no parking problem on the hill from 3:00 AM till 9:00 PM. If you're up there at that time of the day, you're not going to see a parking problem. But if you happen to come up there from 9:00 o'clock at night until 2:00 AM, you're going to see a parking problem up there. There's going to be, there's going to be all kinds of problems up there, but there is definitely going to be a parking problem up there on the hill at night. The hill's business is not groceries, clothing, households, it's the entertainment. It's entertainment-based, so we all know that. Things have changed, therefore parking's a premium at a different time of the day than it is for most businesses. Now, if you think about it, U&amp;I is not a metropolitan school with numerous bus routes, so the kids have to have their cars. It's not Iowa State or Iowa. They're going to go to their jobs, they're going to go shopping, they do need their cars. My guess is that over 50% of my tenants have jobs off the hill and need their cars. Now, I haven't run a survey on that, but that's pretty much the way I find it. They work at Menards, they work, they don't work first shift at Menards, they work, they go to work at, well, tonight, one of them went to work at 4:00 in the afternoon. He won't get home until later this evening. I can about bet you that somebody's going to try to steal his parking stall. This year, 100% of my tenants have cars. 100% of them have cars. Not 95, not 90. 100% of them have cars. And we, they have to register their cars with me, so I know whose cars are whose, and their parking stalls are assigned. A large percentage of my tenants go to work at 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, and they don't come home till 1:00 or 2:00 in the evening. And all too often, when they come home at night, they find that their parking stall that they're paying for has been stolen by someone. And their stalls are assigned, I have them numbered, so if you'll go up there and take a look, you'll see that my stalls are all numbered, each tenant is assigned a stall. Now, everybody says, okay, so somebody stole your tenant's parking stall. Well, to get a car towed at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, come with me someday, that's an experience. They're paying for the stall, they're not very happy to have their stall stolen, and usually if you're going to get a car towed, you'll find that once in a while, probably more than once in a while, it's going to maybe be a 200 or 300-pound drunk that's stolen one of my tenant's parking stalls, and I'm not really, I don't really want to confront one of these guys. The tenant has already walked three or four blocks to get home because their stall was stolen from in front of their building, and most tenants will give up. So there's really no towing involved at all. Now, Karen just reiterated to, or just referred to the point that the parking ordinance that you're being asked to consider is one of the least restrictive in the state of Iowa or in the area. One stall per one bedroom. Now, if you think about this, that's, there's more cars there than one stall or one car per one bedroom. Each parking stall in the past has cost me $10,000 per stall. Now, I can justify that if any of you want to check that. That's what it has cost me.
Less than a minute, Jerry. Less than a minute, sir.
College, okay, I'll skip down here. College students and parents are looking for the least-cost housing at U&amp;I. If they're going to rent a $200 apartment, one-bedroom apartment, there's going to be one student in that apartment. But if they're going to rent a one-bedroom for $900, there's going to be two people in that apartment. Not one, and they're going to have two cars. So, let's see, time, how much?
Just, we're there, my friends.
Beg your pardon?
We're at five minutes. Yep. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask Jerry a quick question?
Sure. Thank you for asking. You bet.
Sure.
Mr. Geisler?
Jerry, you've got a lot of different apartments up on the hill area. What do you find is the average of parking spots that you have per unit for your, for bedrooms?
1.75. I can justify that year after year after year, I've got some of the old leases, and it's that way for this coming year as well. Per bedroom?
For?
For a one-bedroom apartment.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Could we grant him a couple more minutes to finish? It would be up to council because we, I try to abide by the five minutes. I understand, but he's got a long history of knowledge in the area. I'd rather have that be decided by council. There's a motion to extend the time. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls nay? Carries. Thank you for that. You can continue with your... Continue, you bet. You got points you want to make.
I lost my train of thought here.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Anyway, on planning and zoning, we've been through this for close to a year, we've been battling this thing. And on planning and zoning, it came out the other day, what, two weeks ago, the vote was three to two, or three to three. And with that kind of a vote, Mr. Hulse had to vote to break the tie. Well, when he voted to break the tie, well, then it came on to you folks because, of course, they were tired of dealing with the whole situation down, in there. But anyway, if you'll check back on that, you'll find that one of the people who voted to tie that was a close associate of one of the developer who's wanting, who is promoting this development. The city has indicated a parking study will be done on the Hill. However, the staff recommends passage of this item prior to the parking study. My business experience questions this kind of activity. If I go down to the, if I go down to the building inspector, he's going to tell me that I have to have the study done before I can build the building. And in this case, we're saying, we're going to do the, we're going to pass the ordinance, and then we're going to do the study. That's not the way I do business, but anyway. And the city has said these problems can be dealt with as they arise. Well, it's a little too late, it's like the one newspaper item said here a while back when you were talking about the downtown city situation. It's too late. You've already, you've already made the problem. So I think we need to wait until at least after we have the parking study taken care of. Over the last 20, oh, it's 27 years now, I got 26 years wrote in there, but now it's 27 years. My one-bedrooms have had an occupancy of 1.75 per year, year in and year out. Some years it's up to two, some years it's down to 1.5, but for the most part, it's 1.75. And if you go up there right now, you'll find that all of my one-bedrooms have two cars. Anyway, I'll skip the rest of it.
One minute? Okay, thank you, I appreciate your flexibility there. Further open this public hearing to the public, public comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak on the student perspective for what's going on on the Hill?
Sure.
Okay. So just to respond to a couple of the things that you mentioned, I think we are incredibly supportive of the move of the city to try and have more mixed-use commercial and residential things going down, more mixed-use commercial and residential development down on the Hill. I think that's something a lot of students would like to see, and it would make it a lot more attractive, not only for recruitment, but for the students who are already here. In addition to that, I think any action that the city can take to make the parking situation more amenable would definitely be encouraged. And while I do recognize that there are a lot of students who have to split bedrooms and things like that in order to make things more affordable, sometimes in some of the prime real estate, I guess as we'll call it, close to campus there, we definitely think that, on behalf of students, I can say that any, any policy that the city can, can pass going forward to try and improve the parking situation on the Hill, even if it's little by little, is favorable until we get a full parking study done, in which case, the whole student government, I'm sure, would be more than willing to back a plan that can continue to improve the area for the student population.
Thank you. Further open it up to public comment?
My name's Catherine Sogard, I'm at 303 Columbia Circle over in Waterloo, but I'm the executive director of the College Hill Partnership. I dropped off a letter with you guys right before the meeting, so thank you for understanding that we're kind of, wanted to clarify some of the comments that we have made in the past and some of the letters we have sent into planning and zoning. So, over the last few months, the College Hill Partnership has participated in many conversations about the opportunities the future holds in our business district. With any opportunity comes challenges, differing ways to approach those challenges, and the potential for great things to happen. Our business district wishes for opportunities for expansion, innovation, and providing unique ways to live, work, and play. We have appreciated being at the forefront of these conversations with our stakeholders to consider all opportunities and challenges for growth in our district. The College Hill Partnership Board has requested a parking study to address some of the challenges growth brings to our district. Evaluating the data with an unbalanced, unbiased eye is an important way for our stakeholders to understand what the true picture is on the Hill. Such data will help our leaders, such as you, to make policy changes to continue to support economic development in Cedar Falls. We believe that our request should help future decisions about the code and trends in our district. Knowing such research projects take time over, take place over numerous months, it is important to have some clarity so that growth and development are not halted in the interim. Providing enough parking is important to our guest residents, businesses, and students, however, providing too much parking, too much private parking can also be a detriment to economic development and have high costs to the city and its citizens. The College Hill Partnership believes that the proposed zoning code amendments are a great way to clarify some of the ambiguous language in our current code for the College Hill Overlay District. These code amendments provide clear guidance to city officials and developers alike to ensure that it does not hinder growth and development. The only way to determine the best plan forward is to have sound data to measure current, the current environment on the Hill. We hope that in requesting the parking study, it will not delay proposed code amendments that would result in further delay of development and revitalization of the College Hill District. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Further open to public comment?
Eshan Vajpaye, 331 Conver Lane, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I'm so glad that I was here at the Committee of the Whole Meeting to hear the parking consultant's comments because this is exactly the kind of information the city needs to make decisions about parking in the neighborhoods we're talking about. And I think, and I'm glad he stayed, just so if I say, characterize anything incorrectly, he can correct me, but he said, we got to be careful with this density thing. We don't have the buses, bus routes, and the subways that other cities do, from where we're presumably getting some of these comparisons to reduce the parking on College Hill because, and especially, he said, it's hard to compare Cedar Falls to other towns. People don't take public transit to work here, even like in Iowa City. This is a car town. And what I also heard is we need a big parking master plan for the whole city to modernize our parking to allow development in a responsible way, and I know that he said that needs to involve College Hill. We can't build now, shoot in the dark on this ordinance without the benefit of a parking study for the Hill. And let's be clear here, this ordinance is being put forth prior to a parking study to allow one development, okay? And we all know what development we're talking about. A lack of a parking study and keeping the current code ordinance as it is does not prevent development. That's a false choice, I think that's being offered, that the parking study's going to take too long for the Hill, so in the meantime, let's pass this ordinance so this one building can be built, and then the next building will be different. Is that a really, is that the way to do business, to change ordinances on spec without real clear data from staff, just to accommodate one building? They can build anything they want on the Hill right now, they just have to follow the current parking ordinance, but they don't want to, so that's why we have this ordinance here. And I think that's become patently obvious now that it's still being proposed after our city's own consultant says, we need a parking study for the Hill and downtown, and it needs to be a cohesive-type approach to allowing this. So, you heard Jerry, he's got a lot of experience. I represent another landlord, he's got a lot of experience with studios. His ratio is about 1.5 cars per studio bedroom. If you're going to take a shot in the dark on this ordinance without the parking study, err on the side of adequate parking as opposed to underparking, because once you let the horse out of the barn and you underpark possibly without the benefit of a parking study, the Hill's not going to get any less busy. It's going to be a problem that snowballs and snowballs and snowballs. So, I would think the prudent thing to do is to vote no, send it back, either with instructions to wait for the parking study to tell us what we actually need down there, or if you're going to guess, bump it up to 1.5 spots per studio. And one thing we haven't talked about is we're already eliminating the visitor parking on this too. So, aside from the studio issue, we're already eliminating the visitor parking, so some of the ideas put forth by the consultant about how you can handle visitor parking at residential buildings downtown doesn't even get to apply to College Hill now, where residential development is supposed to be discouraged, but it seems like we're bending over backwards to allow some of these really big units to be built and without the benefit of actual data. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone further for public comment? Please.
Thank you, I'm Chris Martin, I live at 421 West Sealy Boulevard on the Hill. I live on the Hill, I work on the Hill, and I actually own some rental property on the Hill. I just wanted to make a few comments. First, I was not particularly a fan of this development when I first heard about it, in part for the reasons that Karen Howard mentioned. I was concerned that our code was unclear about mixed-use properties and parking requirements for upper floors, in part because this was a much larger project than we'd ever had before. I mean, we'd mentioned, Karen had mentioned that the existing mixed-use buildings that are grandfathered into this code propose change, and those are usually just about two stories high, so it wasn't a lot of parking that those were producing, but this one potentially could have produced a lot more parking demand. And so I was, I was kind of concerned about that, and I actually talked with a number, I've been on the College Hill Partnership Board since its inception 10 years ago. I've tried to work with all constituents on the Hill, and I listen closely to the developers and their concerns, the existing developers, and so I was concerned about that. Having said that, I think these proposed rules tonight are actually really helpful, and I just want to mention just a couple points. I think they're helpful, they clarify the situation, I think they're reasonable parking proposals, and this is important. What's being proposed tonight is available not only to the one developer that seemed to be referred to and not named, but to any developers who might be working in this C3 area. So they're not written, they don't have someone's name on it, this is for anyone in that C3 area. So, so I think that's a good thing. The Hill needs new development, I think this is a good thing, and I'm speaking for myself as just someone who lives and works on the Hill, and I think these proposed regulations or rules, changes for the code are a balanced approach. Third thing I meant, wanted to mention, if you remember the map that was just up just a little bit ago, this is just regarding that small C3 area. So when we're talking about the Hill, there's this suggestion, this I'm hearing from people, that this will cause some kind of parking apocalypse. And that's just not going to happen. Remember, this is a small part of the Hill, this isn't the entire Hill, this isn't the entire city, this is just that C3 area. So to, to change the ordinance and the parking requirements for that one C3 area would affect, you know, this proposed development, but any that some people are thinking about, but any development that might be going on in that area. So I think this is, this is an important thing, it's something that we need in the district. Right now, there's a hole on the Hill, and we've had holes on the Hill before for people who've been around here before that have been on College Street, and that's never been a good situation. And we have actually a bigger hole in the Hill right now, it'd be nice to see some new construction development happen in that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anyone further for public comment?
Hello, Dave Dibler, I live at 1616 Campus Street, own a couple of businesses on College Hill. I totally support these clarifications, I think they're reasonable and are what College Hill, the overlay in the neighborhood require and need, I think it makes total sense. College Hill's a very unique area, very different than downtown, and as long as you and I is there, we're going to have a parking problem. You know what I mean? It's, and like Chris just said, it's, this is not going to trigger a parking apocalypse. It makes sense, it's reasonable, and as somebody who's had a presence on the Hill for 25 years, longer honestly, I guess I'm afraid to admit that, it makes sense, and we've had some time to think about this. This is an irash decision, and I overwhelmingly support it and encourage you to vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Dibler. Anyone further for public comment? And, Ed?
Hi, I'm Becky Hawbaker, 2309 Iowa Street, so I live very close to the Hill, lived in the Hill Zone my entire life, work at UNI and often walk to work or bike to work. And I am also one of the neighborhood reps with Chris Martin on the College Hill Partnership. And like Chris, I had some early concerns about how the existing code had been interpreted, and the idea that, that a very large multi-use building would, would not require any parking at all for apartments. And I really want to thank the city staff for being responsive to those concerns, and I also want to stress that what others have said about how unique the College Hill area is in that C3 zone, that we, what we're, what our vision is and what your vision is in the comprehensive city plan is, is for a dense and walkable neighborhood. And what I'm seeing happening on the Hill is so exciting because, you know, what once was only an entertainment zone or only bars, you know, are now, you know, bakeries and donut shops and healthy eateries, and we have visions for so much more than that. And I, I also, you know, as the mother of two young millennials, or not millennials, they're teenagers, I don't know what we call their generation, but, you know, they have different understandings of, of, do you need a car, do you need a driver's license? And, you know, it's true that we don't have great public transportation, but the Hill is an area that can be self-contained. You know, you can exist on the Hill and not have a car. You can go to UNI and be able to walk and meet all of your needs. And I also feel like investing in that vision will help to make that come true, you know, that you build it, they will come, that we have this, that we have a vibrant business district that is, it's dense, it's walkable, it's progressive, it's, it's the vision we seek. And so I really believe that the city staff have worked very hard to find a reasonable compromise. And I'll tell you that from someone who had parking concerns, I will confess that the first thing I saw when I saw another proposal for what might go on the Hill was, oh my gosh, look at all of that wasted space for parking, you know? That was my reaction. My reaction was, I'd rather see a shop there. I'd rather see that used for, for something else. So, I mean, I think, I honestly think that one space per bedroom may be too conservative, but I don't, I absolutely believe it's a reasonable compromise and it's not going to cause the apocalypse, and that this is what the Hill needs, that we need more development and that the neighborhood needs that kind of infrastructure infusion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hawbaker. Still open it up, folks, for public comment? Hearing and seeing, thank you. I'd. You thought it was ever done.
Kyle Demlow, 2113 Vera Way, just a couple of comments. I'm in support of this project as far as in looking at these, looking at these ordinances and getting them changed, just a little more clarification, we've gone through this. It seems like with planning and zoning, as far as, you know, the interpretation for, as long as I can remember, I've worked on the Hill since 2005. I own businesses on College Hill, and I own businesses in Main Street. And I can tell you, we don't have a parking study yet on College Hill, but we're talking about two different completely animals here. These are apples and oranges. When we talk about transport, when we talk about businesses, the businesses that are down on Main Street versus the businesses that are every day on College Hill, drastically different. We're talking about the overlay district, as far as the size, completely different. We're talking about the type of person that goes up there all the time, a little bit different. We're talking about, you know, parking lots that have meters, some that don't have meters, some that are there for an hour. I mean, you can go on and on and on about the differences, but if we're going to sit here and paint a broad brush that Main Street and College Hill are the same, I'm here to tell you that they're not. With having businesses on College Hill, you know, I have people that work in my places, and I have places in other parts of town that won't go work in my other places because they live on College Hill, and they want to walk to work. And they don't need a car to do that. So, I have partners with a bakery that just opened on College Hill, and we have two bakeries. We have one in Waterloo and we have one in Cedar Falls. And, you know, I have openings in Waterloo. And, you know, I have, I have openings in Waterloo, and they, and I have an influx of applications on College Hill because they wanna stay on College Hill. I know not everyone that works on College Hill that lives around College Hill, but the more opportunity that we have on College Hill to bring people in there, and, and make no mistake about this, when I came here at UNI and when my friends came here to UNI, we scoped out that, what we'd be living in, and that's gonna be what's gonna be offered in Cedar Falls, whether it's on the Hill or on Main Street. And people do make decisions about the quality of life outside of the university life, about going to class. And the more vibrant that area is for, for parents with their kids there, for what opportunities, you know, lie ahead of them, the not being able to use a car, I mean, it's a huge, huge opportunity for College Hill, and I'm in absolute support of putting anything else there. We've had a lot of new business over the last five years on College Hill, and it's great. It's brought a lot more up there. But the people that have not been proponents of this, it's disheartening when their comparisons are not their own experiences. You know, when we talk about College Hill and the, the parking problems, they're supposedly there. I mean, I don't know if they're looking at one side, but I'm up there every day. When we talk about, there's a lot of parking that's available. And I do own some bars, too. And as far as the late night activity, some of the, some of these are news, you know, this is news to me, is about the parking, the towing, haven't seen a lot of towing up there. My businesses personally have been called out about my employees parking there, and I've rectified that personally as far as if that actually happened, and it turns out it wasn't exactly the case. It was, well, mistaken identity there. And I'm sorry for rambling, but this is just such an important topic, and, and I really hope you guys take the time to really think about what this means for College Hill, because this is a step in the right direction, not only for College Hill, for the University of Northern Ireland, but for Cedar Falls. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone further for public comment? Again, hearing and seeing none, I'll declare this hearing closed. Item nine is to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 29 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
Sound open.
Motion second. We'll open it up for discussion with council. Mr. Blanchard?
So I appreciate all of the, excuse me, comments this evening and all the work that, that Karen and her team put into this. We've discussed it at length, and I have, I guess, a number of concerns. You know, originally when we talked about the parking study on the Hill and, and trying to make some zoning changes, I was concerned about what that would look like, particularly given the results from the downtown parking study, which is distinct, but, and forgive me, Andy, but I'm oversimplifying, but basically that we've poorly managed our public, public infrastructure and over-prescribed private infrastructure. I don't wanna replicate that problem, but at the same time, I'm very cognizant of the fact that this has caused a lot of consternation for P&amp;Z and really has prevented them from doing anything for quite some time. So given the support of the College Hill Partnership, which is what we rely on for day-to-day observation and operation, just like we do community Main Street downtown, given their support, I'm, I'm willing to support the changes with the understanding that we need to quickly complete the College Hill parking study as fast as possible and then immediately revisit the parking requirements to make sure they're in line with recommendations so that we don't continue to perpetuate this problem, because I don't wanna see us replicate this again so that we have to go back and fix it based on what Andy tells us. Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Burr?
The purpose of this ordinance was for clarity and for defining what a multi-use building was, as I understand it anyway. The problem seems to be is what the number, appropriate number for the parking spaces for the bedrooms. My question would be, what, how does, what does this reduce the parking to compared to the R4? So in the R4, what would be the parking requirement? And, because I believe in our code, doesn't it say that residential is allowed in the C3 but not recommended?
Right. So that a completely residential building, a multiple-family dwelling in the C3 district is discouraged. So the parking requirements for a multiple-dwelling building in the R3 and R4 district in the College Hill area is the same as it is for everywhere in the city, which is basically two parking spaces per unit plus one parking space per bedroom above two, plus one parking space for every five units for visitor parking.
Okay.
That's a requirement currently in the R3 and R4 district in, in, if it was a completely residential building in the, in the C3 district on the Hill.
Okay. And if we're trying to do a conservative approach, as you mentioned, why would we have a different parking requirement than what we have in the R3 and R4?
I think there's been concern that this is quite a, it's an urban district, it's right next to the UNI. There are a lot of people that walk. Not everyone walks. Obviously, there's a large student population that do bring their cars to school. So right now in the code, because the interpretation has been that there's no parking required for mixed, for residential on upper floors, and that's been debated at the commission, whether that's the way to interpret the ordinance or not. This is actually a fairly substantial increase in the parking requirement for the C3 district in a mixed-use building. So I think it was a balancing of those interests that we've heard tonight and were discussed at P&amp;Z through all the public testimony from the College Hill Partnership and from others on the Hill to find that right balance. We felt like this was a fairly conservative approach, and then with the parking study, we can revisit that again.
So if we were interested in changing this from the one bedroom to at least a two-bedroom per unit, what would be the steps we would need to do that?
So...
Would it just take a recommendation or a motion to change that one line in this?
Correct. That's the way the ordinance currently reads as the one per unit plus, so then you just have to amend that, that portion of the text.
So basically, we would just be defining what the multi-use building is?
So you need to change the, the requirement that there's specific parking requirements in the College Hill overlay district. And so need to change, to amend the requirement as stated in the amendment, because right now, what's on the College Hill ordinance is all that ambiguous language. It's not clear what the parking requirements are.
Well, now what I meant was, if we were to take the wording of what we are presenting to us tonight, change the wording from one bedroom to two-bedroom, and then, and then change it later if we needed to after a parking study was, was done, what result would that be?
So you're proposing, just so I'm clear in what you're proposing, two parking spaces per unit? Is that what you're saying?
Right. Where you've got ones, one per bedroom, if we were to make that, we had heard a 1.5, we also heard a 1.75. If we went with two, so it also provided parking that way for any business use or any visitor use, just as a compromise, would, would that be the only change we'd have to make, is simply say, change the word one to two?
So two parking spaces per...
Bedroom.
Per bedroom?
That's your wording. Your wording was one space per bedroom.
Two parking spaces per bedroom. That would mean for a two-bedroom apartment, you'd require four parking spaces. That would be higher than everywhere else in town. So that would be significantly higher.
But I think to answer your question, Mr. Burr, is right now with a motion and a second, you would just make that amendment?
Okay.
Anything further from council? Mr. Wieland?
Thank you. I have a couple of subjects I'd like to mention just briefly. Mr. Geisler gave us a big, long list of concerns. One of those involved Marty Host. From being the old guy on the block, I've watched Marty Host in P&amp;Z, attended many, many P&amp;Z meetings. I have never seen him vote on anything where he has a financial interest. He abstains. In fact, I told him he abstains way too much, but he's very active in the architecture. I suspect that if he had any financial involvement in this, he would have abstained from it and made sure that he wasn't violating the rules. So I just wanted to say, Mr. Geisler does an outstanding job. His latest developments have gone far beyond what he's required to do. But I also think Mr. Host is a man of integrity that would not have voted for this if he had any financial interest. So I pass that on. The other thing I wanna pass on is we're trying to get rid of a vague language that's in the ordinance. That vague language has stopped developers two or three times because it becomes argumentative. When it becomes argumentative, it says, we have a problem with policy. We're trying to solve that policy in times to get development going this spring. So it makes sense that, that we would adopt this with the caveat that if the parking study changes, we can change it. I think you say that. But we need to get moving on what we're gonna do this year and let our developers who are very confused know if they have an idea that has a chance of succeeding or not. So I pass those two thoughts on.
Thank you, Mr. Wieland. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, it was right about this time last year, we voted on, on the project that's been in question. And I was, I was supportive of that project, but I felt that the law didn't allow us, that my interpretation of that law didn't allow us to do the construction because of this, this idea that no parking would be required as it was, it'd be considered a commercial building. And I was really concerned about offering a blank check. The developer was offering some parking, but if we had approved it last year, we would have basically said, as a commercial building that has residences over the top, you don't have to provide parking for your, your tenants at all. And I didn't wanna go down that road. So I voted against that with the hope that we'd have what we have here tonight, which is an ordinance that will need some tweaking, will have to, to adjust based on the, the parking study, but I, I see that it's a, it's a great step forward. And then on the point of, of the voting, I thought about that, too, from looking at the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and, and the past meetings, and that the person in question, it wasn't, wasn't Mr. Host, but it was a developer who had a business relationship with the property that's, that's in question. And in, in the case of this, I, it was a four to three vote, and I thought, well, would, is there a question of a conflict of interest in here? And I just don't see that as being the case for, for this level, because we're talking about overall zoning. And that means, certainly, there's a, Mayor and I have talked about this before, that the people that you have in planning and zoning are almost always gonna have some sort of an interest. It's part of why they, it's part of why they serve. They want, they, they are experts sometimes in their field and they're, they're knowledgeable. So you can't restrict people from, from voting on everything, if that kinda makes sense. So I, I'm okay with how that, that vote moving forward with the four to three, and just would see that this, again, puts us on a right step forward for being able to make the, the kind of College Hill that we wanna see.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Cruz?
Yes, I'd like to ask Andy, on a parking study, you get approval to do so officially from the council.
Mr. Cruz, you make it very difficult, because council rules are, this is a public hearing and there's public discussion, and now council is making requests for questioning? I'm not questioning that as well, but that will need to go in front of council to, to bend the council rules in terms of involving the public on this part of the, of the, of the public hearing. If you'd like to make that offer, I'd be happy to present it before council.
I would like to find out in some fashion how long the parking study would take, because I believe if we approve the current proposed language, then the parking study shows that we shouldn't eliminate visitor parking spot, or we should still have parking for commercial, that we have a development that's moved forward, and then it'll become legal non-conforming. I'd rather see this tabled until we have the parking study finished, which I believe would probably take three months, maybe less. He's got all the information, the framework there from the Parkade study, downtown study. It shouldn't take too much longer to do it. The construction season doesn't start for several more months at all, and as long as you get a foundation put in the ground, you can build on through the winter, and, and you can see that with the hotel being built. So if I could make a motion to table this until the end of the parking study, I think that would be the prudent thing to do, because we're here setting in motion something that's gonna then produce potentially a legal non-conforming building, and I'd rather do it the correct way, and we're not talking about that much more time. So my question was gonna ask Andy how much longer it would take to do the study, if I may do that, or what's the procedure to do that?
If I may, there's a motion to ask a question outside of the specific hearing for council. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That does carry, and I'm happy it does. If you'd like to have some question to the parking study, consultant, please come on up and ask a question.
The city requested me to give a proposal, which I did. I understand it's apparently gonna go before council on March 4th. The discussions we have, we talked about the actual boundary area, so it's gonna be a larger area. It's gonna be a parking shed and not just a C3 district, but it's not all, we're not gonna inventory the entire overlay zone, because there's so much residential in that zone. But we talked about staff, the idea being that I definitely need to be here while students are still on campus, so that being probably April or May for doing the, the occupancy information. But the study would take about three or four months. It'd be about the same duration as what the downtown study was. So that would put us, if, if the approval happens in March, I'm here in April. So by June 30th, which we would have, I'm always hesitant to paint myself into a corner with a deadline, but I think June 30th is reasonable to have enough information.
With data associated with students being in place in March?
Correct. Right, right. Well, we'd start in March. Frankly, for March, I'd be doing the interview stuff, probably.
Okay.
And then we need to talk about, but obviously, UNI's involvement is gonna be paramount to this study effort. And I really, I have not, I went up to the Hill once, because my focus right now has been strictly downtown. I only passed through the Hill once so far, so I'm not at all familiar with it. I looked at some aerials, and from the aerials I saw, it looks like where the meters are, people don't wanna park in those lots, and they're parking everywhere else. So it's just, that's just from the aerial that I looked at.
Thank you.
But yeah, so about, about three months, but by June 30th, I would expect to be significantly done.
May I ask one question of Mr. Wieland? And just a real quick question, and you may not be able to answer this now, but I had somebody mention that there could be some benefit to doing one count while students are here and one count while they're not here, to give sort of a 12-month picture of what the area looks like. Is that something that you think would be valuable?
I mean, that would be valuable information, sure. So I, again, I don't know, I, I do not have any experience on the Hill, so I don't know how seasonal it is right now or isn't. But I heard some good information. I took some good notes tonight, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now, I knew you have a motion you mentioned, Mr. Cruz, the motion to table?
Second.
No, 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 no. Public comment's over, sorry.
This is huge.
You're right, and so is this process. Sorry. There's a motion, second to table? Any further discuss, no, motion is, the table to win or just open?
With condition, so it's debatable.
Is it conditional or is it wide open?
I think you said till after the study is completed.
Till after the study, that's correct. That is not, that's actually not debatable. So there's a motion in a second to table until after the parking study. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I believe there's two ayes and no nays, or two, did you get that?
Five, two.
Five, two, thank you, Jackie. That does not pass. We are now back to the original motion as presented. Any further discussions?
I just have one comment.
Go ahead, if you don't mind, Mr. Burr. Go ahead, Frank.
I was, I was at the parking study also tonight, and, and when I came tonight, I had, I shared some of the concern about, well, if we're gonna do a study, maybe let's wait until the study's over. But after hearing the study, I, my own interpretation, I'm pretty naive about things, but our issues seem to me to be less the number of parking spaces and more about how we access them, how we use them, how we monitor their use. And so I'm, I'm kind of anticipating that the parking study would have very little impact on the recommendations. I, I don't know that, but I think it's, I'm more interested in, in seeing the recommendations about how we use all the hundreds of parking spaces we have up there. Can we engage the university in sharing areas or other creative ways of doing it besides just adding more parking? So I think we have a real reasonable approach here, and I'd like to move forward with it.
Mr. Burden, do you have?
I simply wanted to amend the motion. On the district requirements for criteria for review on page 353, item, line D, the big question has been what the proper number is as far as whether it's one or 1.5 or two or what. I'd like to make amendment where it says, for dwelling units within mixed-use buildings, where it says one parking stall per bedroom, to simply make that 1.5, because as people have mentioned, we can always reduce that number, but I can't increase it after anything is, is built. is built. So I'd like to make a motion to change that, or amend that, from one to 1.5.
There's been a motion by Mr. Bor to amend the original motion for the dwelling of mixed-use, one stall to 1.5 stalls. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Comment or no comment?
Yes.
Open for comment for, from council.
I'd like to reiterate what people have said, that if, and Karen saying that we can put this in force and then change it. So to me, it's prudent to go to the conservative level, 1.5. We can get all the other corrections done that we want to do and keep moving forward. And then if the parking study shows that we could go back to one, it would be easy to strike and change that one particular item. Is that right, Kevin?
It would take another ordinance amendment.
Correct, okay.
Same process over again, sure.
Sure. So I think that would be very prudent, given the comments from the various people, to amend to 1.5.
Is that for the single bedroom?
Any further, any further discussions? Open, it's closed out there, if you will, Mr. Sires.
I believe that's my understanding.
Anything further as far as questions?
Karen, can you just summarize what that, how many that would be for an average unit, then, just so everyone's clear?
If it's, if it's 1.5 per bedroom, that would affect an all?
No, I'm saying one, for one-bedroom units.
Okay.
I think that's Susan, that's your amendment?
Right, like it is in your?
Just for the one-bedroom unit.
For the one-bedroom units, it'd be 1.5. A two-bedroom is two parking spots, three-bedroom, three, four-bedroom, four. That's our standard language right now.
So the amendment would be to 1.5 for a studio and a one-bedroom, and then one parking space for every bedroom above that, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion from council? Mr. Miller?
Couple points. The big thing to me is this is C3. It's different, and I get that there's, you know, the reality out there, I don't want to lose sight that people still drive cars in Cedar Falls, Iowa, but this is C3. And our intent is to increase the density, the walkable, bikable neighborhood. So that changes the context. I don't know for certain whether one-bedroom is enough, or 1.5, and I'm a little hesitant of that, too. But I think the big thing, and if developers aren't hearing it out here, is a parking impact study is most likely going to be something that's going to benefit you if you want to bring something to P&amp;Z or to the council. And to Darrell's point about putting this on hold, I guess the parking impact study is what can solve some of the concern with any development coming forward in the interim. And I guess I think the parking study doesn't necessarily do anything on the specific, it's more concerned about the public parking and the use thereof. So for myself, I'd like to see this move along.
Anything further from council on the amendment?
Could I ask a clarification question?
Sure.
I believe this, you stated is going to cover R3 and R4, not just C3?
So one of the amendments is to make the parking requirements consistent for all, for the multi, multiple dwelling units, buildings in the R3 and R4. So the proposal is to make them all the same parking, because there was some concern about fairness and consistency. So those, just the R3 and the R4, on the Hill, not everywhere in town, of course, it's just in the Hill.
Are going to have the one per studio.
That, that's the proposal in the amendments, yes, to make everything consistent.
So it, to Mark's point, this goes beyond just C3. We are saying that we're going to change the code, under what you're proposing here, for R3, R4, and C3, one parking spot for a studio or one bedroom. And I propose, Karen proposed, Susan proposed, that we go one and a half for C3, R3, and R4. That's to, Mark, to clarify what I think we're doing here. Because then again, we can change it and amend it in three, four months, as soon as Andy is done. And a parking impact study will have to look at the current code to determine if the building is fit, fitting properly.
The parking impact study just determines what the reality of the parking is for that building, right?
Based on the code, wouldn't it?
No, it's the reality of the, of what happens with parking in that building. It's based on the code, you're right there, I think.
Would there be an increased comfort level if it was moved to just impact the C3 district? Is that some of the concern with that? We scale that down, is that?
Hearing from the public, it's pretty universally documented that studios and one-bedrooms have more than one person. We're dramatically increasing the density here with this proposal, what is said that C3 has residential discouraged, and now we're flipping to putting in multi-level residential on multi-use. Throughout the last 30 years, city policy has been to decrease the density around the campus in R2, R3, and R4, and now we're circling back to increase the density just in C3. And you stated R3 and R4, so we're going full circle here, and I think an evaluation should be done, or an amendment.
Mayor, to his point, could we have the map put back up, showing the R3 and R4 around, in the overlay?
Sure.
Actually, I got to.
We have it?
No, she showed it earlier.
Sorry.
So the, so one of the reasons that we included the R3 and R4 is because that was the zoning that was right next to the campus, within, within a block or two of campus. The rest of the College Hill overlay is all R2, which is single-family.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if there's no other comments on the amendment down here? Go ahead.
Danny, can you put up the map that I had you make?
We can have Danny make maps?
No, I didn't, I didn't get with council, but Councilman Cruz requested that an image to be approved, and I just didn't get an email out to you folks, because we went to the gaming association.
There we go. This is the entire College Hill overlay, and you can see the R3, R4 zones, C3, and then around it is R2. Over the last 30 years, policy has said that in all of the R zones, we downsized from what could have been five, six, seven, eight people in a, in a household, if there was bedrooms and parking, to just statically say no more than four unrelated. Now, we're circling back and want to increase or allow C3 to be super-dense. And by the way, I don't mind density in all of this. I think it would give the patron or the establishments on the Hill to have all the people they want living around campus. But if we're going to increase the density in C3, we should do it in the entire overlay, and then bring the students close to campus, close to the bars and the entertainment that they, they're in town for. So that's why, to Susan's point, R3, R4, C3, have one and a half parking spots. Study is done to determine how reasonable that is, and maybe go out into the entire overlay and increase the density, because I remember back a number of years ago, there was a six-bedroom, six-parking-spot home that the tenants, students were told to disperse, because you couldn't live there. And the reason that the city has always told landlords is there's not enough parking. Well, if you've got off-street parking to the code, but you still can't park people there, that's, that's counterproductive to what we're now trying to do, increase density. If I'm making myself very clear here, but I'm in favor of density for this whole overlay to whatever is reasonable based on a parking study by an outside consultant. So Susan's amendment is saying, for now, one and a half parking spots for the one-bedrooms in R3, R4, and C3, subject to change by a consultant. We can get everything else put into place, and then study if we want to further increase density for everything.
Thank you. Anything further on this amendment by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I feel like the difference, if we go back to that, sorry, Danny, that graphic that was just up, I think the difference from what Mr. Cruz is saying, though, is when we look at C3 and, and wanting high density in there, and, and the potential of expanding that high density out into the rest of the College Hill neighborhood, the difference is that in C3, you don't have homeowner-occupied homes. And part of the reason why that change was made through the rest of College Hill was because they didn't want high density next to homeowner-occupied. So I'd, I'd be very leery about trying to tack on an increase of density into the rest of the neighborhood.
Anything further? Mr. Darrell?
Just knowing that, conversely, Darrell asked how quickly the study could be done, and how easy it would be to make a change, I'd prefer to continue to support the professional, the recommendation from our professional staff, and then if we discover it's not adequate, go back and make that motion and, and increase it to 1.5. But if it's going, if it's that easy, let's just go ahead with it, trust the staff's judgment on this.
Thank you. Anything further from council on this amendment?
Can we read the amendment?
Karen, I may need some help here, but basically, the dwelling through the mixed-use, mixed-use areas, moving from one stall to one and a half, and then subsequent bedroom to parking areas.
Right, so the motion is to, for?
I just, I just switched and added from the one that you had written to 1.5.
For one-bedroom and studio apartments?
Correct.
And then one parking space for each bedroom after that, right?
Well, then the clarification I was looking for, then, that is in C3, R3, and R4 as well?
That's what I answered.
For the original, right?
Well, I would have preferred not to change it for R3 and R4, but because the staff recommendation was to change it in all of the zoning, I wasn't going to argue with that. I just felt that it would create less problems to other residences in the C3, or buildings or property in the C3 district, if we had a more conservative parking requirement than the less conservative of one. Because I do think that it will create problems to the surrounding neighbors.
The motion is there for the amendment, it's been motion and second. Any further discussion from council?
So this is for C3?
Yeah.
R3 and R4?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Based on that, that does also, not, it's not approved, does not pass. We go back to the original motion. It's been motion and second for the discussion.
I'd like to propose an amendment that the change to one stall per bedroom only occurs in C3, not R3 and 4.
It's a motion to change a C3 only, and not the R4.
R3 and R4.
Pardon me?
Only C3.
Only C3.
Can we have Karen just go through, just briefly again, Karen, why you didn't recommend that?
Needs to be seconded, I'm sorry. There's a motion.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Blanford.
Karen?
What we had heard from a number of folks during the discussion was that there was concern about consistency and fairness for people that were developing multiple dwelling buildings, and because the R3 and R4 were also directly adjacent to the UNI campus, and so would have a similar demand, I guess the direction was to make those all consistent, so there was consistent standards.
Can you go through what street differentiation that would be, Karen, just so everyone's clear?
So if we can have the, the map up. So you can see from the map here that the C3 is in the black, and then the R3 and R4, you can see the University of Iowa campus there. So within two blocks, basically, goes over to, the R3 goes over to Walnut Street, and R4 kind of wraps around, there's a center section there that's R2, it wouldn't be affected. But the R4 extends along College Street up to 19th Street, and then over to Campus Street, I believe.
Any further discussion? Mr. Whelan?
Should this pass, existing structures are exempt?
Existing structures does not affect existing structures, other than the fact that if it has a lower parking requirement, they should, could potentially add a park, a dwelling unit, but, you know, with existing development, that's probably unlikely to occur. So all the existing units are grandfathered in.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Yes, Mr. Cruz?
So the grandfathering component here will then only apply to C3, not R3 and R4. Not going to, based on Mark's proposed amendment, everything will just focus in on C3, on all components of this.
Correct. Everything, the, the parking for the, if the motion passes, then for this, I'm sorry, what, which motion are we on, with the regular one?
We'd be approving.
What's the question again, answer?
Mark's amendment was to just apply this one car per studio, single bedroom, to C3, and not R3 and R4.
Correct, yeah. So that would remain the same, so there would be no change to R3 and R4. So in the C3 district currently, the parking requirement arguably is zero, and so the, any buildings that have apartments in them would be grandfathered in with what they have So they wouldn't be required to add, in other words, they wouldn't be required to add parking requirements. This would be an increase in the parking requirements in the C3 district from what currently is imposed, which is zero.
That's subject to debate, which is why we're clarifying this.
Right, that's correct.
Any more discussion on the amendment for the one-bedroom to one, one parking to one bedroom, on the C3 only? Motion and second, any further discussion, Mr. Blanford?
One more question. Karen, was there, did this get discussed at P&amp;Z at all, as far as C3 and, R3 and R4? Does it provide enough clarification for them? Or do you think we would end up back in the same issue, where they can't make a decision?
I think really, the, the initial discussion was just about the C3, and then the only, like I said, the only reason we included the R3 and R4 was just to, for consistency purposes. So it wouldn't affect necessarily redevelopment in that C3 district, then.
Any further discussion? Mr. Whelan?
Would you repeat the motion we're voting on, please?
I'm going to rely on my city clerk this time.
I believe Mark's motion, seconded by Blanford, was to amend the one per bedroom to only apply to, was that Rob Green, I'm sorry, one per bedroom to only apply to the C3 zoning only, not the R3 or R4, which is currently being proposed.
Any further discussion on that amendment?
Question. Does that give an unfair advantage, then, to anybody developing in the C3 over anyone developing in R4? As far as they'd be able to have more units at a lower price, is that correct?
So, so that would be a slightly lower parking requirement for the C3 district for a mixed-use building. You can't do, other than if council approves, you can't do a completely residential building in the C3 district. So it would just apply to the mixed-use buildings. It would then have, would revert back to the existing parking requirements for multifamily in the R3 and R4, which would be a higher parking requirement than, if this motion passes, than what would be in the C3 district. So going back to the point about being consistent, the consistency issue and the fairness issue.
Again, it's motion and second on the amendment. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify that, I think zoning does that, doesn't it? I mean, depending on what the zoning is, you have an advantage, or you don't have an advantage, no matter what the conversation is, so in a lot of regards, in my opinion. I mean, the zoning sets, this can happen here, we, we kind of want this to happen here, so I guess I don't have a problem with that. For myself, you know, reducing the parking requirement to, to Rob's point, the further we go out with lower requirements, the more it affects the residential side of it, too. So the intent, again, comes back to the C3, and that's where the businesses are. And the, according to the comp plan and all the rest of it, the intent is to make this a vibrant center. And if this is one, means that we've got to do that, then I think it's time we move it forward. And again, on the parking impact side of things, I certainly hope that everybody is considering that as they bring things forward, because it clearly is going to be a conversation that's going to be had.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to follow along with Mr. Miller said, we've had requests in the past, since I've been on council, to expand out C3 zone. So if we find that, that there's an advantage to that, or we want to... So if we find that there's an advantage to that, or we want to increase that type of development, we have the ability to expand out the zoning to C3 throughout campus, and that's, as I understand, that's what the comprehensive plan is seeking to have us move toward anyway. So I feel like we'll get there eventually.
Motion and second to the amend, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
That amendment does not pass as well. Moving back to the original motion, there's a motion and second on the table. Any further discussion from council?
Going back to Susan's?
No, you're going back to the original on the agenda.
Original.
Original. We're back to passing ordinance, many chapter 29 relative to the College of Illinois but overlay zoning district, first consideration.
The timing of this, then, we go through two more readings?
Correct.
Then published, take effect then immediately after the third reading?
Timing after the last reading is immediate after?
Effect after it's published, so usually within the week.
Published, yep.
Okay, and then developers can come forth with a proposal based on the new code through planning and zoning. In the meantime, the parking study is taking place, and we can see where we are at in the process of that, and whether we want to approve a project under the interim code, if we want to call it that, subject to then changes, or we can table the project, waiting for the study, is that correct?
I think all those are options in terms of moving forward. Any further discussion on the original item? Requires roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, first is the consent calendar. The following items be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from council or the public requests an item to be polled for such discussion. Any requests from council? From the public? Hearing say none, I'll summarize the consent calendar. Item 10 is receiving and filing the following resignations, Karen Moreland from the Housing Commission and Todd Blanford from the Human Rights Commission, and I thank those folks for their service to the city. Item 11 is receiving and file the committee of the whole minutes of February 4th relative to the FY '20 budget, bills and payroll. Item 12 is receiving and file the city council work session minutes of February 4th. 13 is approve the application for a permit, and 14 is approving applications for permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
So move.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next is the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests such an item to be polled. Any such request from council?
Item 15, Mr. Mayor.
Item 15.
I have a question simply on 24.
On 24, I'll pull it real quick. Anyone further from council? From the public? 15's polled, yes, thanks. Anything further? Hearing and seeing none, I'll summarize the resolution calendar minus 15 and 24. 16 reads approving and authorizing execution of a form of contract for the public safety facility. 17 is approving and authorizing execution of an asphalt crushing service. 18 is approving and authorizing execution of a professional service agreement for a sewer replacement project. 19 is approving and accepting the contract for the place-to-play playground project. 20 is approving and accepting the contract for the 2019 street construction project. 21 is approving and authorizing execution of supplemental agreement relative to engineering services. 22 is approving purchase agreements, utility easements, temporary easements in conjunction with the West First Street reconstruction project. 23 is approving and authorizing submission of the Iowa Certified Local Government Annual Report of the Historic Preservation Commission to the State Historical Society of Iowa. Item 25 is approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement for the downtown visioning and zoning code update project. Is there a motion to approve resolution minus 15 and 24, please? Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote?
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15, it reads a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a second amendment to lease with Sartori Memorial Hospital in Wheaton-Franiscan Healthcare Iowa, formerly known as Covenant Health System, allowing a name change from Sartori Memorial Hospital to Mercy One Cedar Falls Medical Center. Is there a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, open for discussion, are questions from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so looking at the resolution, it's to legally change the name of Sartori Hospital to match the branding of the other Wheaton-Franiscan properties. As I remember it, the Sartori family donated the land to the city to construct a hospital in the early 1900s. I can appreciate, as a marketing person, the need for consistent branding, but I hope that we will still do our best to find a way to honor the Sartori family for their generosity. My neighborhood has the name Sartori Park unofficially. We do have the actual Sartori Park playground area. With this 120-year-old property being Sartori, I just, I was sad to see that we were going to lose that, because we're going to lose a bit of our place name and local character. So I would still approve this, but I hope that we'll find ways to honor the Sartori family through this.
Thank you. I saw, Rosemary, I know you want to come up, you mentioned beforehand.
Evening again, Rosemary, Rosemary Beach, 5018 Sage Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I just want to just speak a little bit about the name of Sartori, and being on the Historical Society and on the board and the director for 13 years, Sartori is a famous name within Cedar Falls, and I, my hopes is that they will continue that. I just want to give you a couple of things to think about. When Sartori came, he was an immigrant, and he had to come because he could, come to the United States, but he couldn't bring a wife, because the lady he had wanted to marry, her father said, no, he doesn't making any money, he's not doing anything. Eventually Theresa came, and that is who basically the hospital is named after. Sartori and his son, after Theresa died, gave the money to Cedar Falls, I believe it was $15,000, and in order to name the hospital after her, and so it is in dedication to her. And it was said in the newspaper, she never turned anybody away from her door, and so that is kind of the legacy of that. And speaking of the legacy, when I was at the director of the Historical Society, we wrote a whole book. When I say we, that's the grand we, but we wrote a whole book on the Sartori family, and we called it the Sartori Legacy, because of all of the things that family did for Cedar Falls. Back, if you notice downtown, you have Sartori above some of the brick buildings, he built those. He built his house on Sixth Street, and it's a name that we really would like to keep. 1915, I believe, that hospital opened in a snowstorm, and I believe that the first operation was that day, and it was an appendicitis, let's put it that way. I have been, have been part of Sartori Hospital, in that I had three children delivered there. The first one, when I was 20 years old, I'm now 58, so you see, I've been attached to that hospital for a long time. And that's when, I just, this isn't a site, when I was there, we had to quit having babies, because the doctors and whatever all. And there is something about when you have a baby in a hospital, that a woman retains in her head, I guess. I was on the hospital board for six years and maybe more, I can't remember, I've been, my husband and I have been friends of Sartori Hospital. I baked more stuff for Sartori Hospital to be sold at Christmas season. And I will just say that my husband was there for two weeks this last month, and I stayed every night in that hospital for two weeks, and I slept in the same room in a, kind of an interesting chair. I watched the nurses move, I talked to the nurses. We were in intensive care, and then we were in regular care. And it is, it's so remarkable, because it's like being home. Let me see, what else did I want to tell to you? Also, that I am on the Sartori Health Trust Fund Board, and have been since its origination, which we have done wonderful things with the decision of the city, saving money back, and using the interest to give health-oriented gifts through asking for them to numerous things. We've got de-hubilit, that's what I want to say, what is it, one of you who need to have your heart shopped later?
Maybe later.
Thank you. And those are all over, we've given money for so many things, that it's really a neat spot to do. Anyway, I am speaking basically for some who have talked to me of my ilk and my age, and just asking to retain somewhere the name Sartori as the new hospital comes. We know change is good, we're told that for a long things, but also history is good. And I would like to say that out loud, it would be nice to have somewhere the Sartori name allowed in our new hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. White, did you want to pull that up and say something?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue. I don't have as many experiences as Rosemary has with Sartori, but I have been hospitalized there, and our daughter was born there. I'm also, as is Rosemary, on the Cedar Falls Health Trust Board, and have been for, not as long as Rosemary, but for several terms. And I know progress is progress, is moving forward, I know that branding, I understand branding, and for any entity to want to have a uniform brand, but I am disappointed that the name Sartori will disappear from our hospital. And like Rosemary, I hope that there's some way that we can salvage that. That would be, to me, a tragedy. After 103 or 104 years of that hospital operating, and with the history that Rosemary has given you in terms of how it came to be a community hospital, that would be sad, it'd be tragic to lose that, and I'd be disappointed. So I hope, I know Mr. Duzenberry is here, and I hope he's able to do something about that, he's probably powerless, because Mercy is the big player, and so they get to make demands, and I don't want to do anything to interrupt our present healthcare delivery system. It's been a good system, it's been a good system first under Sartori solely, and then with the joint venture with Covenant, and then Franciscan, it's been good. And so I hope that continues, but it sure will be sad to lose Sartori.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Jack, if you don't mind, sir.
I'm Jack Duzenberry, the president of what's now Mercy One Northeast Iowa Region, a few weeks ago, Wheaton-Franiscan Healthcare Iowa. I agree wholeheartedly, Rosemary, Roger, thank you. Didn't say a word I disagree with. I do have some power as the president to do a few things, and I will insist, I wouldn't have it any other way, the name Sartori will be memorialized. This, I was, pardon me, I was at a meeting at Sartori this evening, and we have several copies of this, the Sartori Legacy, and there's chapters about the hospital and the snowstorm, and the whole story in here, you were probably involved in writing this. We have that at the hospital, and there are pictures and plaques, and there's ways we can memorialize, we would never want that name to disappear. I'm just going to take a quick second, several of you probably know this, but I feel like I just need to let you know why we're asking for this name change. The Wheaton-Franiscans, over a 100-year history in the Cedar Valley, their first hospital was Independence in East Waterloo, in the 60s, St. Francis, the name Covenant Medical Center was born, that's now Waterloo Medical Center. So it's a long 100 years, and over the course of many years, we just ran out of sisters. There's no sisters today under 65, and they're headed towards zero, or we'd still be Wheaton-Franiscan. So we gave ourselves away to a statewide network that was formerly known as Mercy Health Network, 18 owned hospitals, 25 managed, and I can tell you, they've worked together for about 18 years. We've spent our two years integrating ourselves, laundry, IT systems, payroll, general ledger, I won't bore you with what we've been up to, but we're ready to move forward, and for the first time, this statewide network has one strategic plan, our cultural beliefs, our key results, the agenda of a meeting, we're really trying to evolve and improve healthcare for all Iowa, and hold ourselves accountable to best practices. I find myself in Des Moines, Sioux City, Clinton, DeBuch, really trying to do something creative and move forward, and that brings you to the brand. We launched the name Mercy One, and then every hospital, DeBuch Medical Center, Mason City Medical Center. We think over time, the investment made and holding ourselves accountable as statewide network will prove results, but I'll just backtrack. We never want to lose the history, you know, 100-year history of Wheaton-Franiscan. I love it if you've ever been at Covenant Medical Center, you walk into our new ER, you see that wall, there's the first bill, there's pictures of Independence, there's pictures of Shoites. We want things to live on. We can be creative and do that, and make sure the name Sartori has never lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Dave?
Three minutes? I am disappointed in you guys. I mean, I come back here, and all this snow sitting around here, but I want to address a little bit to the Sartori name and that, and I guess I speak to support Jack in that I'm vice chair of the board of, I don't know what we call it now, it used to be the Wheaton, it'd be the Mercy One Board, and so, and we've already had conversations about how that we're going to recognize the Sartori name, so that will continue in some form or fashion. Roseberry should know that I kind of carry that on, because I was on the library board when the Carnegie Library went down, and we spent a little time making sure we got those capitals back in the back area and a bench, and tried to recognize the heritage of that, too. So I think that's probably about three minutes. You guys are going to be well served, we're going to carry that Sartori thing through.
Thank you, sir. Anyone further on this item? Hearing and seeing none, it's been motion and seconded, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 24 reads resolution approving and authorizing a joint project agreement with the city of Waterloo relative to reconstruction of the University Avenue and Midway Drive intersection. Is there a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, there was a question, I think, before, or if there's comments from council?
Yeah, my question simply was, I didn't see a dollar amount in the paperwork, I was curious what the expected cost of this would be, and also, was that cost figured into our preliminary or our prior cost on University Avenue, or is this a new item?
Exhibit B indicates what the cost estimate is for Cedar Falls with a total, including a contingency amount of $252,650.40. We factored some of this into the CIP, we knew that this was going to happen at the time, I thought it was going to be a little bit lower dollar amount, so it is about $85,000 more, but we revisit our CIP every year, so we'll be taking a look at that.
So it wasn't in the prior numbers, then, with University Avenue?
We had factored some of it in, at about $160,000, yeah, about $160,000, but this cost estimate is a little bit higher.
Thank you.
Anything further from council or the public for that matter? The motion and second requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, does council have any referrals? Hearing and seeing none, does council have any updates? Mr. Dara?
I just wanted to thank Brian Heath and the Public Works people who have been pretty much working 24/7 for the last 10 days, and it's an amazing job that you do, and keep up the good work, it looks like you might have a little more to do.
Agreed.
Any further updates from council?
I was just going to comment and maybe clarify, and maybe Brian can help me out with this one. He and I had some discussions about 911 calls that come in, and in the night of a blizzard... He and I had some discussions about 911 calls that come in and in the night of a blizzard, how it's handled, procedures that take place. Brian, if you could elaborate on that.
And before you do that, is there any further updates from council? And that was actually an update I was going to ask for Mark Riplinger, who would have introduced Brian Heath, and now you're up as far as answering some questions and giving us the lowdown on what you folks do, Public Works, generally speaking.
Let me start out that way. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Brian Heath. I'm the Public Works Parks Division Manager. One of my duties throughout the winter is to deal with snow and ice control. I make the decisions on when equipment goes out, the amount of resources, and when and how much of that equipment goes out to work. So I'd like to start first, give you a few statistics here of what we have for equipment, manpower, et cetera. We're dealing with 220 miles a street, that's about 470 approximate lane miles. With that, we're using 20 truck plows. We've got three loaders with wings, we've got two graders, we've got five ton trucks. And them ton trucks typically go around and do cul-de-sacs once we do a full plow so that they can free up the larger trucks to stay on the main lines, on the straight line runs. We run with 30 plow personnel typically. That doesn't mean they all show up. There's times when there's absences due to illness, or somebody may be out of town or something like that, but typically we have a 30 plow personnel, we have three mechanics, and then the supervisors. Typically six supervisors share the call for us. A normal full plow operation will take, on average, seven hours to complete. That's from start to finish, from the time we call them to go to a full plow, they get in their trucks and go till we typically wrap up. It takes about seven hours for us to complete the entire city. We break our streets up into priorities. We've got priority one, arterials, that's our higher speed thoroughfares, those that like Hudson Road and Green Hill Road and some of those, and our priority two, collector streets. The layout there is intended, when we plow those streets, we want to make sure we're plowing in residential areas, some of the collectors, so that residents can get out onto those without a lot of problem when we do have heavier snows like we've experienced the last couple of snowfalls. Two to three hours is typically what that takes to complete. We'll have those done, and hopefully residents can at least get out to the collectors and onto the arterials and on their way to work or whatever. Then we get into the residential streets, and them are all the other streets typically residential in nature. We've got 15 different areas. Some of those routes have two trucks each, some have one. I think we have six routes that share two trucks on one route, some of the larger ones. So there's quite a bit going on when we do a full plow. There's a lot of decisions that go into our snow and ice control decision-making process. Time of day is probably most critical for us. If we get snowfall that begins during the day, we're going to get out there right away and get on them arterials and make sure slippery conditions are prevented if possible, and we're going to stay on those until such time either the snow stops or we make a determination to go to a full plow. So typically, we can get done with our priority ones and twos, like I said, in a two to three hour period. See, for example, a night situation where we get snow coming in overnight, we'll watch the weather, we'll watch for the duration of the snow to pass before we go out, or we'll go out as soon as we know we need to get out there to take care of the morning commute. In other words, get the priorities done before the morning commute. We're also going to factor in the amount of snow that's falling. If we're getting a lot of snow in that short period of time, we want to be careful not to expend our resources too quickly, but yet not be too far behind the eight ball when we do go out. So typical timeframe, as you may know, with all the updates that I've provided over the past several snowfalls, they've been pretty similar time-wise. They've come in overnight, we started either 3:00 or 4:00 AM, got the arterials open for the morning commute, then moved into residential areas and typically had them done by 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon. So that's kind of how we handle things. Again, every snowstorm is different. You've got to factor in, like I said, time of day, the moisture content of the snow, if you've got wind, we've got to factor that in because a lot of times we have to follow up with drip patrol like we've done the past couple of snowstorms. So there's so many things that go into the decision-making process, and we know that impacts a lot of people and them decisions are not made lightly. My staff and myself, we collaborate on each storm. Ultimately, the decision is mine to make. And when we make that decision, we go with it, and sometimes we're plowing more than we want to, sometimes we're starting a little later than we want to, but we make that commitment and we go, and I think so far this year, the phone hasn't rung a whole lot, so I think we've done a pretty good job.
Yeah.
Darrell, I know you had some questions in regard to like overnight when we have issues with urgency needs.
Yeah, I've just seen some of the blogs kind of complaining, if you want to say, about what happens when you're not plowing, you're waiting for the snow to finish, and someone calls 911 with a heart attack or someone goes into labor. How do you respond to that? Can you explain that?
Well, for us, we have on-call supervisors. The majority of those supervisors are equipped with a four-wheel-drive vehicle with a plow. They're within a short distance of time for them to respond. 30 years ago, this, or maybe even 20 years ago, before the PD had SUVs, now they're driving four-wheel-drive units, so it's not as big of a problem as it used to be. They've got the ability to get around in emergency situations, more so than they did when they were driving cruisers. So regardless of that, we do have the ability to get out there at a moment's notice. If the on-call supervisor can't handle the situation, then he would definitely call staff in to get out there and help where needed.
So then the connection is if somebody has an issue in the middle of night, in the middle of a snowstorm, you just call, they call 911, the dispatch calls police and fire at the same time, correct?
That's my understanding now. Chief Birdy or Chief Boswick may want to expound on that.
And then from there, then they call the on-call supervisors and they determine if they need a pickup with a blade to bring somebody to the hospital, or the fire department can respond with a blade.
Yeah, and typically, we would, our on-call supervisor would receive that call from PD. PD and fire, both, I believe, receive the same calls if I'm correct, and then they have the ability, both have the on-call supervisor number for Public Works, but typically it's PD who makes that call. They're going to be aware of the situation, whether it be a medical emergency or even a fire emergency, and they're going to give us that call and let us know that help is needed. And typically, our fleet supervisor attends most working fires just to help monitor the equipment to ensure that it's operating properly.
So you may have a case where you need to plow for the fire trucks to get to a fire?
There's a possibility. Most of the newer trucks are equipped with chains, so they should be able to get there on their own with the weight that they got and the ability to get through the snow with, by deploying them chains that are underneath the vehicle, but yeah, if need be, we could certainly do that.
So it sounds like you have a very good system in place to handle most emergencies, fire or police.
I think communication's the key, teamwork's the key, making that communication to get ahold of us. If need be, we can be out there and make things happen.
Okay.
People who are coming onto arterials are being blocked by large piles of snow right at the intersection. What are you doing to cut those down to get visibility out?
Well, when we get a break from the precipitation, we're going to be out there loading snow out of them intersections. We've got several intersections, not only just from city streets, but also from businesses onto city arterials that we're going to need to address. And with the amount of snow that we've had recently, and we've got another one coming tomorrow night, we're going to see it get worse before it gets better. As you know, our staff is geared up this evening to haul all of the snow from the parquet, the college hill, and again from the high school. So once they do that, then they'll regroup, go back into plow mode, and then once we get done plowing the next batch of snow, then we'll go back into haul mode, probably have to do the high school again, and we'll address some of these sight-distance issues.
Thank you, Brian. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And if anybody has any questions, feel free to get ahold of me. I would like to also give a shout-out to my staff supervisors. They're exempt employees, they've been working an extraordinary amount of time over the past month and a half, 38 days, I believe. Plow operators, they've been very responsive. We've had very good feedback from them in getting them on the job site. They've been very efficient throughout this whole late winter snow drive. Fleet mechanics, we couldn't do it without them guys. Some guys are keeping our equipment going. We've had some issues where we've had some trucks go down, but they were quick to get them going again, so got to commend them. And then we've got our parking lot and our sidewalk crews that are out there in the cold weather. They were out there dealing with that mess and the polar vortex and trying to keep all of our pedestrians safe and then our public buildings open for business, so got to hand it to the staff. They've done a tremendous job.
You bet. Thank you for that as well.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. I do have a quick update for council and the public. We, myself, Ron Gaines and Stephanie, we presented to the gaming board, the gaming commission, before the committee as a whole to present and request the phase one of the downtown reconstruction. Am I saying that right, Stephanie?
Streetscape project, yep.
Yeah, Streetscape project, and we had just heard before or during committee that that was approved, so that, once again, the gaming folks came through for us, and we really appreciate all that they do for the county and for Cedar Falls in particular. Moving on to public forum, speakers will have up to one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Go from the back if you don't mind. Oh, go ahead. Yep. You know what I mean.
My name is Jeff Johnson. I live at 923 West First Street. First thing is, I want to hand out some kudos. First, I want to thank the mayor and the council for listening to me tonight. Special kudos for Brian, and also you, Mayor, and city engineer David Sturch. I made myself appear down here this morning at 10:00 and ambush the mayor. And so what I want to do is I want to piggyback on this snow issue. Cedar Falls is doing a great job. I live on First Street, so I'm also piggybacking on the reconstruction of First Street. As you know, we're going to go to five lanes, turning lane. The residents are losing property. We all know that, okay? Currently, we have an 11-foot grass parking that's going to become the full lane on both sides of the street. So therefore, we're now going to go down to a seven-foot parking. Imagine what we've got for snow out there right now. Our 11-foot is full. You have a couple of pictures?
Sure.
This is what the DOT did to me today, and it's done a couple of times. They fly up First Street at 35 miles an hour or faster. What you're seeing are chunks that are 18-foot from the curb that have hit the side of my son's car. This is the third time, the second time this year that that's happened. What I'm really concerned about is that, number one, we've got big piles, but this, it will clog a snowblower, and you're moving now how much closer to our properties. You come off my front deck, you're going to be 10-foot from the sidewalk. So once you move that, when you look at that sidewalk there, folks, that's the 11-foot, come a foot in onto the sidewalk, that will be the curb. Another seven-foot will be in my flower bed, which is gone, and then a five-foot sidewalk. We are going to have First Street snow on the sidewalks. We're concerned about the people driving down the street. My neighbors complained, and there's been several this last week that have just about been T-boned coming out of First Street with the amount of snow that we have right now. Occasionally, the DOT comes by and they'll trim, okay? But they don't trim by the driveways because that puts it back into the drive. Our DOT drivers now have the big truck and two sleds. When they go down the street, there's one and they'll have two sleds behind. There will be a second one with the same thing, and then there's the last guy that comes along that catches close to the curb. I caught that gentleman out there the other day and hollered at him, and all he did was smile at me as he drove by. Mayor and Brian is also taking action of sending photographs, these photographs, along with working with the DOT and their employees to slow it down through that area. 35 mile an hour is too fast to blow snow when it's ice chunks. And now we're going to get closer this next year, once the construction starts, and it's really going to be interesting when we go down to two lanes on First Street for winter. The DOT is not going to be able to send a big truck with three sleds, I mean, two sleds behind it. So that is my concern, that we as a community get behind, because I know that we have to have this First Street project. I know that that has, that's part of the moving forward, but the safety is of the people that are paying the taxes and that you guys are supporting and representing. So I'm here complaining, yes, but I'm also here for the safety of every single person that goes up and down First Street and the people that live there, because if somebody gets hurt, there's going to be a lot more heard about it than just snow. So again, Brian, Cedar Falls, I'm very proud with what they do. I wish those DOT guys would slow down from pressure from you guys once they hit the residential. Open it up as fast as you want when you go outside of town, but when we live here and have that opportunity of that hitting us, and if it hits my car, now I'm dealing with insurance, then I'm going to be down here talking about that, and I don't want that because the property I live on, I've been on my family for 135 years. My mom is a Humbert. Humbert School was named after me, after my great-great-grandfather Solomon. Humbert addition is where I live. I still live there. My kids are the seventh generation. I don't want to move because of a street. I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Penny, did you have?
Good evening. My name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main Street. As I'm sure most everyone has heard, we lost another firefighter this past week, one that has served our community for many years. What a shame. I can't help but wonder why this is happening in our fine city. Different folks were interviewed afterwards, well wishes and thanks were said, and the culprit identified. It was a council-based decision to create a public safety officer program. So as usual, I've been trying to find out more information about this council decision. I was pointed in a good direction by several members of our public safety staff and found some information, the key being "some." But clarity and implementation of the public safety program was nowhere to be found in accessible public information. I would have to agree with our council at large's request that a five-year plan be created for the public safety program. This suggestion was brought up at goal-setting this past year. I was appalled at the response, or lack of, that it got during the discussion. One council member didn't want anything written down. He said it might be used as propaganda by the program's opponents. As a private citizen, I am concerned about the state of our public safety program. I understand that measures had to be taken years ago to help keep the city of Cedar Falls financially healthy. It would only make sense to update these decisions, as with any city, its growth or decline is fluid, and the city council should be current on their information and decision-making process. Is it? What are you seeing that we aren't? I challenge our city council, since you are the ones who approve this program, to ask for clarity and publish the mission, goals, and implementation of the program for the next five years. What is the harm in that? Or do you consider it propaganda? I, for one, am tired of being in the dark. We are losing too many good people over lack of clarity. I would think city council would be up in arms over the loss of so many firefighters. But unfortunately, you have demonstrated to me that you believe the program is fine as is by voting down the creation of the five-year plan. I will send my personal well wishes and thanks for your service come November. That's the end. That's the extra perk that I'm getting as a resident of Cedar Falls. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Anyone further this evening? Any council comments, questions, previous speaker, staff? I don't know if there's any questions from council. Here's I reading that out. Go ahead, sir.
Eshan Bhachpad. And I have friends on this council whose decision-making I respect greatly, but what Ms. Pop just said dovetails perfectly with the message I want to talk about right now. And I had written down on page number one on my points for this public comment. I heard today that there's no need for a College Hill parking study because I think it will confirm what I already think. So, that's what the vote was based on today by several members of council. No need for a parking study because I think I, it'll just confirm what I already think. But you don't know. And I heard that maybe six, seven times. Well, I'm not really sure what this is going to do. I'm not really sure what the parking study is going to say. Maybe we can change it later. And I think that that is indicative of a bad road this council's going down. PSO program, this where we just blatantly ignore the data and make a decision based on our gut, based on staff's, very thinly substantiated case for the parking ratio as opposed to waiting for more information. Second thing, I'm not sure, how can we amend this motion on the ordinance on the fly? Ordinances regarding, or at least site plans regarding the College Hill overlay have to go through P and Z because of the nature of that overlay district. So, I question whether that was appropriate to have been done in this forum anyway. Seems like it has to go back to P and Z. They've got to give their input, and then it can come back. Third, correction of the record. It was not Mr. Holst that Mr. Geisler was referring to. It was Mr. Winger, whose vote required Mr. Holst to break a tie. And to one councilman's statement, this has been glossed over, but I agree. You have to have realtors on P and Z. You have to have people with the expertise in real estate because it has to do with real estate. But this is not a tangential relationship between the developer on this project that we've all been talking about and Mr. Winger. It's a $60 million business relationship that I've substantiated from public records. These two have been co-signed on $60 million worth of real estate mortgages together. I don't think we would lose very many other P and Z members if we at least held them to that standard. You know, I don't think we're going to be kicking off all the realtors all of a sudden if we say, you can't have a multimillion-dollar ongoing business relationship with the developer for whose site plans you're voting. Last, pretty much, false choice. I heard, there's a hole on the College Hill. We need to fill it. We need to fill it. It's stupid to have a hole on the College Hill. We need to allow development to occur. One thing I've never heard from this developer is why he can't build to the current code. I've never heard anybody ask him that. Why he needs the code changed to build a building? Why he can't fill the hole by building a building that conforms to the current code? Answer, he doesn't want to. And this ordinance that might go forward is the real hole, the loophole that is going to allow this specific building to be built, and then we're going to come back with a parking study after his building gets built and the permit issued? And like someone else said, what if we're wrong? You can't knock that building down. You can't make him add parking afterwards. So, we're just going to, on a whim, reduce the parking for this building, and then maybe we change it later? But really, does anyone think if the parking study comes back and says, you underestimated the parking, you need to crank it back up? Let's get real. We're not going to be back here cranking it back up. So, I heard this issue, this comment, interim code. Interim code? We're just going to pass an interim code because we can't stand to let one building not be built on the developer's timetable and to his specifications? We can't stand to tell him to go back to the drawing board, knock down 20 apartments, make it a smaller development, and build that building? We can't stand to make him add 20 more parking spaces? We got to change the law? I think some self-reflection on this would be valuable prior to prior readings. And I think the people whose friends and colleagues, whose opinions I respect on this, upon further reflection, will note the error of their logic.
Thank you, Mr. Bhachpad. Anyone else public comment this evening? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full say, we are adjourned. Thank you.